You good?
Yeah.
Call the new order. Roll call.
Very well.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Wolton. Reese.
Yes. Okay, do we have any public forum?
Larry's gonna have something there. I know.
Larry, we can't hear you yet.
How's that?
There you go. Okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to visit with you guys about the tile and the trees there by the sewer plant. A little history on the trees. That was an FFA project about forty-five years ago. The city granted the FFA permission to have a tree nursery there. And we, I as an FFA member back then, planted a lot of those trees in the city as a project. So that's where that tree nursery came from. And it must've got abandoned sometime after I graduated from school in nineteen eighty. So, the other issue is the tile. That, I put that tile up seven years ago. The issue is the water from the viaduct, on the north side, north half of the viaduct, from the top of the hill down to the bottom, all that water drains on my property there. And I've had the DOT and the mayor and Scott and Bill were there, I don't know, was that a couple of weeks ago?
Yep.
Yep.
So the, there's an issue about you has to maintain that ditch. The DOT is pushing it off on the city. Anything from the curb stop to the fence line is supposed to be the city's responsibility. But Bill doesn't agree with that, and I don't know where we're at with that besides a limbo. And I've been dealing with Scott and the mayor for the last three or four years, probably, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
About the issue. So anyway, the tile line that was plugged by the trees is what drains the water away from the viaduct, the ditch in the viaduct. If you notice, when there's a heavy rain, that water ponds up there. So that, the purpose of the tile is to drain the water that I get donated from the viaduct road. So, I just wanted to set some of the facts straight there about why that tile line is kind of somewhat of you guys' responsibility. So, does there, anybody have any questions? Or, I guess the other thing of it is, the DOT is supposed to be digging a little ditch from the outlet of the storm sewer, I guess you'd call it, to my, I put a tile intake there to try to outtake that water away so it doesn't pond up in my field. Now, we didn't get any confirmation of when that was going to happen, but he did say he would try to do it. So, that's what I wanted to tell you guys about, I guess. Do you guys have any questions?
I don't believe so, Larry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Does anybody else have anything for public forum? It's on the camera.
Like, can't hear anything yet. Okay, so, hey, thanks to everybody for participating on Zoom. Just little, little instruction about, about Zoom participation. If, if you would like to speak, everybody's on mute right now. And, and if you, if you would like to speak, you can raise your hand. And you raise your hand by clicking that hand signal on, on your, on your screen. Or if you're on a phone, you raise your hand by dialing star nine so that we can, we can see you and, and acknowledge. I would, I would let you know that it's out there.
Okay, there you go. Okay, consent agenda, need motion to approve. So we second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Wolton.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Okay, the building permits, we're all ready to get on?
Yep, everything is in order.
We have the motion to approve the building permits.
So move.
Somebody must be a second.
He was a tire.
Tire?
Yes.
I got you then.
Okay.
Okay.
Moller.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom's.
Yes.
Okay, we have two fence permits that have been applied for. Are they okay?
Yes.
Need motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yep.
Tom's.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Before we move on to the public hearing, Royce has to leave because he got wet at the fire. We'll look at all the, on the nuisances, so you're first up, Royce.
Oh, thank you very much for taking me out of order, by the way. Say, Scott, at some point in time, I have a question for Dave Long as we're here, suppose. We've got a couple of nuisances served, and people are starting to get some stuff picked up. We have more work to do, but we're getting started. Cars behind once more have to go. I talked to John earlier, we got another one that I'm gonna go take care of, or the guy gave you permission to take care of. But we're, we're getting them going. Also, the question I have for Dave is when we serve a nuisance notice, there's a ten-day appeal process, or a ten-day appeal process to the city council. I don't know how they get in here to do that.
That the, well, I can read the answer.
Okay.
You just, just have it so that the appeal comes to me.
Okay.
And that, you just make it so that I'm the.
That you know about it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know it, I'll have to specify that in there. I had a question in my mind, because it says you can appeal it to the city council.
Which they would, they would, appeal mean we'd get it to the council?
I'd like an update on Janet, because I don't remember what we did last fall. Didn't we do some to court?
Yes, we did.
You know what addresses those, I mean?
I don't know how they came out in court.
Do you know, Dave, Janet?
No, we filed on the guy up on the highway for one of them, that once more. And it seems to me there's a couple others we did.
Didn't we do TNS up?
I think we did.
That's, that still needs to be cleaned up.
Okay.
Does talking to him do any good?
I see Steve had a load of junk in the other day, but we actually had filed on it last fall, and I don't know how that came out.
I just think we need an update on the.
Yeah, so Dave, yeah, Dave Janet, as far as that goes, so we had a couple of cases, I think, that were filed last year, and, and one was like TNS sighting, and one was.
Once more?
No.
Yeah, we filed on once more.
Okay.
Or once again, one, whatever the story is up on the highway.
Once more.
I can't hear what Royce is talking about, and I don't know which question it is.
Can you hear me, Dave?
I can hear you, Becky.
My question is, did we take some to court last fall?
Yeah.
Who?
Some nuisance cases to court last fall.
Scott.
Yes, but we took several, I can't.
Can, could you give us an update, like maybe the next meeting or something?
Yes.
And then on that weird and property too, could we have an update on that next time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Six fifty-seven on Vine Street. Can we do that, Dave?
Just drafted that today, one twenty-eight Vine Street.
Yes, outstanding. Does anybody have any questions for Royce on nuisances?
Yeah.
Okay.
These weren't on the list that I had from last year.
Okay.
But they should've been, and they might already be on your list, but.
Okay. These people put a bunch of stuff out today. I haven't driven by to see what it looks like yet.
Well, if you can't see it from City Hall, it's probably.
There's a lot of them, a lot of stuff out, that's for sure.
Cleanup days was well-used this year, let me tell you. There's a lot of people's stuff out.
So does what, Rudd getting most of that stuff?
Rudd gets mo, Rudd gets a lot of it, you know, anything that we would consider to be, you know, any of the.
Pickup stuff.
Yeah, you know, small, small pickup stuff, garbage, rubbish, that, that type of stuff. We'll do all, all wood, we'll take care of the metal, we'll take care of the appliances. Rudd takes care of seventy-five percent of the stuff, it seems like.
I guess we're good till next meeting.
All right, thank you very much. We'll see y'all, have a great evening.
Okay. Okay, we'll open the public hearing on the sale of eight twelve High Street. Do we have any public input?
Hold on, I'm gonna unmute everybody here for a second. So everybody is unmuted, I think. If there's any public input, this is the public hearing on the sale of eight twelve High Street.
It appears we don't have any.
Okay.
We'll close the public hearing on the sale of eight twelve High Street. Resolution twenty-two eighty-eight.
I want to go through this.
You want to talk through it?
Real quick, so we got, we do have two, two bids then on the, on the proposed sale of, of that property. You see that the two bids were for one thousand five hundred and five dollars and five thousand five hundred dollars. So we would take high bid and, and then just the stipulations on that, that the high bidder had to go ahead and, and tear the house down within forty-five days of, of receiving the title. And we, we do just give them a, a quick claim deed to that property. So, how quickly does that turn around, Dave, as far as doing all the paperwork?
If that's the resolution, we could get it ready this week.
What happens if they don't have it down in forty-five days?
We get it back.
We do get it back, yeah.
So, also what, like foundation that stays, is that right?
They're gonna tear down the house, was the requirement was to tear down the house. And there's that foundation there for, for that garage building, there's no requirement to remove that.
What about the house, foundation that's?
It's got, it had to be taken, removed. Yep, I'm ready for the resolution.
Motion.
Make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-two eighty-eight.
And I will second it.
Roll call.
Tom's.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Wolton.
Yep.
Stankin.
Move them again?
Pardon me?
You gotta unmute.
Yep.
Open the public hearing on the contract for Camp Crescent improvement project.
All right, everybody's unmuted. So this is public hearing on the, on the plans and specifications for that Camp Crescent project. And I do want to go through that, through some information on that, too. Any, any input before I would go through some information, I'm gonna go through the bid and, and talk through some options.
We'll close the public hearing on the Camp Brown improvement project. Muted again?
So what I wanted to talk about, okay, we talked about this project, and this sheet was on, was on your, at the desk tonight. This is the, the low bid for the project. And low bidder was ten-point construction out of Benson. See their total bid on that, two hundred and four thousand? We had budgeted actually for, for an extra hundred and seventy-five thousand. I told you a hundred and fifty, but it's a hundred and seventy-five that was budgeted. Got together this afternoon with the mayor and, and Eric and Ruth and Bill. We're going through any potential cost savings that we might have on this project, you know, is there ways that we could, could reduce the, the cost? Couple things. The items that we would look at, item number three, I circled them all on your sheets, number three, about excavating that swell. The notion here would be that we would just not do that drainage swell. We'd still have everything drained to the east, but it would just continue to drain as normal. Next item, item six, HMA is hot mixed asphalt, but that's a, that's a patch from where they would cut the, the existing asphalt streets down there with, they'd cut them as they were installing the sewer and then also as they were putting in the, in the dump station. As we're looking at that, we do think that's a real opportunity there for, for some reduction, that, that need not be put back in as, as asphalt. The, the asphalt starts at the north at the old entrance and comes south a little bit just to, basically to the dump station a little bit past, and that's where it stops. That's where, that's roughly where this trench would, would go through. So, that would just simply replace the end of a, of an asphalt road that's gonna stop anyway, and then also takes out some of the asphalt around the dump station. We may still want to do some expanded patching in there, but a lot of that could be, could be withheld from the project. See, that one was sixteen thousand. Class A roadstone, that, all that roadstone is to enlarge and move that, that east road a little bit. And. Shows up on the plan notes yet? Do we want to show this to you? My handwritten numbers. It would be. On page five in my handwritten numbers on the lower right. I'm at the right, right side of, of the picture where it's, the text says proposed edge of gravel roadway. You can see the existing roadway, it's, it's just lightly penciled in there to the left of the new roadway. So, but that's as much as it ever moves. So it, on the south end, it is relocated about that one half space, but the rest of it, a lot of it is, is maybe widened a little bit, but it's, it's not relocated. So I do think this is an opportunity there that we can look at, at reducing the, the amount of, of roadstone. We wouldn't relocate the road nearly so much. And then the fourth thing would be a, a reduction eighteen in seating. But, so if you look at that, you know, especially not doing the swell, and I talked with Eric some about, about drainage down there then, if, if the swell weren't put in there, just what's, was the thoughts on, on the swell?
Well, I don't think that it, it never has drained very well down there. And the new description, they're gonna drop that by about a foot across there, which is not gonna help the drainage any, anyway. And they're gonna try to dig up to three-foot-deep swell towards the lake end of the swell, and that would run behind a lot of existing campsites that are basically all gravel and right up next to, you know, Beck's property, but I, I just don't see that's gonna help anything at all. It's just gonna have water back up into that swell and cause more problems than it would solve. Because, you know, some of the water runs a little bit south, some of the water runs north. Essentially, when that water is there, it, it just sinks into the ground eventually, you know, unless you have a really high water table, but it just stands there for a couple of days. You know, so I think the excavation is a waste of time, it's gonna push that everything to the east, and then there's six grassed-in campsites on that east edge which will be affected, and it'll just ruin those six, in addition to the, making it more difficult to, to the water. So I think just eliminating that swell altogether would be a better idea than having that in there, because I don't see the benefit whatsoever of the thirteen thousand dollar expense to put in a swell. That's gonna be just a mosquito pill. And on that, the roadstone, the number seven thing there, eleven of those sixteen sites they're gonna pave are mostly gravel right now. So when they excavate the gravel out, you put in this cement pad, you're gonna have a huge pile of gravel already without having to purchase any more gravel. There's a lot, there's anywhere from two to eight inches of gravel in some of those spots because they are just always wet. You know, in this past summer, on Memorial Day weekend, we had such a wet, wet year then, you know, wet time then, that people would dig their own sump pumps, they would dig down in the gravel, put a sump pump in the, in the ground, push the water to their neighbor. We had a lot of, we had a lot of weird stuff going on now, down there, because, you know, the water just stands in there. Regrading the road is gonna eliminate that problem near as much as, I mean, it should, you know, it's just not done.
So if you had water standing there now, but you have gravel there?
Yes.
And you put cement there?
Yes.
What's that gonna do, one to the pad and one to, now it's, I mean, it's, it's gonna just stand there? I mean, there's no way, there would be no reason for it to drain, right?
Right, there's no, there's no, not very much drainage there now, it's just, it's always, always just been pretty flat, and they're saying they're gonna do it, this plan is not gonna change the grade that much. So yes, it would still stand in there, but, but at least your, your camper would be on solid footing, you know, your camper wouldn't be sinking in there, you know, four or five inches of more. And they, they need to get, you know, sometimes they have to get, getting the tall out of there, you know, real tall, you know, don't get stuck in there, and the cement pad will immediately back.
So you think the cement pad would hold up, though, to that water?
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sure that there's a, there's a solid footing under that, under that area.
In, in this case, there's crushed stone underneath there.
Scott, I, I for the swell, or what? We weren't supposed to get some, you know, money for that?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was gonna be the original idea, was that we'd get some grant money for that, and then meet some of the specifications about being able to percolate water into the ground. And, and we weren't able to use that. So, we would just look at continuing to grade everything so the water, water flows to the east. So you gotta think of it as flows to the east to the fence line, and then it's just natural flow of where it goes right now.
Please, so you're saying we got a base of crushed rock, some of that area down, so we wouldn't be removing that crushed rock?
It does get removed, and, and, yeah, everything there gets, gets removed, everything gets, gets regraded then, so it's in there right. And then there's crushed stone underneath all of the pads, as well as all of the approaches to the pads.
So if you decide to go with this, then you're gonna have to have this again?
No, you know what, what I'm, what I would suggest and ask of the council tonight is two things, there's two resolutions on the agenda, and the one is to approve the plans and specifications, which I would ask that you would approve the plan. We've bid, we've bid these plans, it would be the, the plans. But then, the, the second thing for tonight is to award the bid, which I would ask that we would not award the bid. Ten Point is, is the low, the low bidder, and what we would do over the next two weeks is work with Ten Point to create an initial changeover off of these ideas. If we had taken out all of, completely taken out all these ideas, it's like forty-three thousand dollars, it won't be that much, because we still need to do portions of it. But there is some, some cost savings to be had here, and.
Much, you know?
Total potential's forty-three thousand, I don't, I, I need to talk with the contractor before we get an actual price.
So if we don't accept this bid tonight, and we change it this much, and construction and housing, we do that, it's like?
Their, the amount of, of their bids and their bid items wouldn't have that big of an impact. Yep.
Anybody have any more questions?
Dave, you know, did camper, I'm not real familiar with, with that bigger, bigger efforts, you think, of bringing people in, having them aware of?
Six sets, I assume?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
That's the first thing you've written, I think, Ruth?
Right, right now, we have nineteen seasonal campers that are there for at least five to five and a half months. And we've got about four of them that are there for about three months. And we're asked generously about long, you know, seasonal sites, which we don't have anymore, you know, because they're reserved for all the holidays, revenue.
And that's what dates would be?
Well, some, yeah, part of them, part of them.
Usually they were the first to get picked, or they go first?
Well, yeah, we, the, the other concrete pads, we've got some seasonals in there, but so many family reunions have gotten used to those that we don't wanna give those up for seasonals, you know, and take them away from their family reunions and stuff. So, you know, we just, I think if we had more, we could bring in a lot more revenue.
Okay. Yeah, the cement pad sites are the first choice of everybody that's, that, that, it comes very level, and you have over in your furrow around.
Yeah. And we're proposing sixteen, so.
Sixteen sites. Okay. And there was some, some numbers in that memo about, about the revenue that those existing concrete sites bring in, and it, it's pretty dramatic over what the, what the existing sites bring. And even though we're downsizing the number of sites, we have twenty-four sites there right now, we're downsized to sixteen, but revenue was just about three times as much off the same site.
And, and the other thing is the fifty F.
Yes.
Because everybody's got, they do campers anymore, they all need fifty X.
I thought this was to be like a lot twice, is why I'm not looking at something right?
Ah, I was thinking of the net total per, per second. Five hundred versus fifteen. That's why it, it generates that much more revenue if the number of sites moves down.
Those sites back there, right now, are just doing it. Those sites back there right now are just doing it.
And those yours?
Those yours?
There, those sites right now are, are eighteen-dollar sites, and, and we would upsize the utilities on them, they would throw the twenty-two up.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
So you, you're looking for a motion to approve the plan?
Twenty-two ninety-nine. So we would look for a motion on to approve, we have twenty-two ninety-nine.
I'll make that motion.
Wait a second? I'll second it? Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom's.
Yes.
Wolton. Reese.
Yes.
Moving right past twenty-three, we're not.
Anyway, look for a, a motion to table thirty.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Wolton. Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, orders five oh eight, this is our second reading. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, I got a comment online about people not being able to hear too much, if you can speak up and speak into your microphone.
Well, just to go back over this a little bit, August nineteenth of two thousand nineteen, the council decided to have the P and Z look on the shouses and the, anything associated with that. And September, then it was published in the resort, on September third, a person from the public came and addressed the council opposing building design criteria. On September thirteenth, there was a P and Z meeting which one of the people against the design criteria attended. September twenty-third, there was another P and Z meeting concerning it. I believe there was a meeting in October that I could not find a reference for. November twenty-fifth, they had a P and Z meeting at five o'clock at night, I don't know, they have a pretty large internment, so there was contractors and business people there. January seventh, there was a P and Z meeting. January twenty-second, there was a P and Z with the final preparation for the ordinance. These are all public meetings that were devoted to this, besides the council meetings that went on. On February seventeenth, we did the first reading, and then the second reading got tabled. And I think, a couple of things, I think, one, since it's been so long, I think we oughta do a first reading, I would make a motion to do a first reading again, and then you will have two more readings, and if people are allowed to attend publicly, they'll be here. I, I think we had so many people at so many council meetings and at the P and Z meetings that I can't imagine that there's any more input on either side of this issue. I think we've probably heard it all. So I don't think there's gonna be anything new. I think this by Zoom meeting might be the new normal. We have no idea when that's gonna end. The council, the motion was to table it till the full council was here, the full council has been here for a while. So I'm just making a motion to make it the first. So I'm just making a motion to make it the first reading.
Is that reading to go back and do it again? That's what I was just gonna ask.
All right, Dave, we can hear you now. Any concerns if this is made to be the first reading again?
I don't have any concerns about it. So the effect would be, I think it'd be, I'd be more comfortable if you just requested an additional hearing. You know, or start the process over or something rather than keep putting numbers on these.
But do you think we can have a second reading when the first reading's been delayed for so long?
Well, I understand that. I think I'd be more comfortable if we just place it on. I haven't heard about doing a first reading before, so.
We're in weird times.
Yeah, that's true.
It was tabled because of the council. The council is all here. And the public attends by Zoom.
And so does the council, so. I don't know.
Is there anybody indicating they don't say anything?
Tyson, hold on, there's Tyson Beckman. Tyson, can, Tyson Beckman?
Yep, I can hear you.
All right, okay.
Um, guys, I just, this is what I live day in and day out with what I do for a living. I service twenty-two different counties in Iowa and Nebraska doing real estate appraisal evaluations. Zoning is key to most of it. And out of those twenty-two counties and all the cities that are within that area, including the Omaha metro, I have yet to run into a zoning that actually stipulates some of the things that you guys are requesting to put in this ordinance. I even checked with approximately a hundred different appraisers across the country. And none of them seem to have run across any of this either. And I just wanted to know if the city attorney had even looked into the Iowa Code four one four. That doesn't even state that the zoning can actually stipulate design standards that the powers of granted are somewhat limited yet with zoning. So I just didn't know if any of that's been brought up or looked into.
So what kind of things do these cities have in place then?
Well, what you guys are running into with the design standards, those are typically done within neighborhoods which, with their HOAs and whatever a developer buys a chunk of ground and is like, they're gonna put in lots. They might put covenants and restrictions in stating you can only use certain colors or such and such, but some of these.
I understand that in a covenant, but I'm talking about there has to be regulations out there on building within established neighborhoods. There's got to be some issues out there.
I have done quite a bit of research on it and even consulted with other people and they have not ran across this.
So they're putting, so they're putting, I mean, do they have this issue? Are they having sheds put in neighborhoods then?
Typically, it's all about how the zoning is set up with the land use. It does happen in a lot of the smaller communities and it does happen in some of the older developments in larger cities. The key is when the land gets developed is to put the covenants and restrictions in then. That's not the city, that's the developer of the land. So I understand where you're like, oh, we don't want chouses and that kind of stuff. But even some of these design standards would limit putting certain manufactured homes. And that is actually illegal based from HUD. HUD sets the minimum standards or maximum standards for even manufactured house development. And some of these design standards would actually prohibit manufactured homes from being put on lots and that.
So you're saying that they would not meet for the criteria?
Yep.
I take it you've looked through the criteria?
I've looked through it, yep.
So they.
Some manufactured homes would, but not every one. But HUD also says you can't discriminate against manufactured housing.
Right, I know that.
But also, I'm in and out of a lot of new construction homes. And I would say about thirty percent of the new homes north of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark wouldn't meet your design standards.
I don't understand that.
Yeah.
You're talking four criteria, one is an overhang?
Yeah, well, most new houses, they're going with larger garages. Well, you're saying you can only go so much in square footage. And now you're drawing out these lots that need to be significantly wider so you can. And typically, you want a residential lot that is a little bit more narrow and deep. And so now you're saying, well, now with these design standards are locked. Instead of a standard, you know, ninety foot or seventy-five foot, they need to be close to a hundred and twenty foot so you can get your nice three car garage and still meet requirements to not exceed some of the percentage of the house. And then when you're getting, typically, a house is designed to go back further on most new constructions instead of out wider.
So. Excuse me. Scott?
Yep, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay, the design standards don't stipulate garage sizes or how they're set about or anything. They just stipulate that you have four criteria on the front part of your house. We don't have anything in the design standards that we put forward on the planning and zoning that have anything to do with how you set up your garage or what space you have or what percentage space you have.
The last reading that I had received from the cap was that the garages, if they exceeded more than six foot from the front of the porch, they couldn't be getting certain design standards.
No.
Yeah, I tell you what.
No, that's not.
Yeah, Tyson, that was a couple of revisions ago. Anything pertaining to the percentage of garage or the offset of garage, that's all been removed.
Yeah, we have eight, was it on your email, Scott? There were seventeen or so criteria that you needed to have on the front of your house.
There's eighteen.
Which is designated the front side of your house. It didn't have anything to do with garages or setbacks unless it's just the standard city setback for any home in the city. But some of the design criteria were like permanent window boxes and shutters and overhang and maybe a two-tone roof and maybe two different, maybe some brick or brick facade with a.
I don't think you're looking at the latest criteria.
Okay, well, I guess my biggest concern was based on the zoning power provided from the state that you guys would have. According to the Iowa zoning code, and I'm not an attorney, but from what I can read out of it, it doesn't grant authority to dictate design standards. And I just wanted to bring that up, maybe the city attorney could look into it a little bit further before we keep wasting more time on it. It seems like there's a large portion of the population here that is obviously throwing a fit about this because they don't agree with it.
I understand that, but here's the opposition. And I'm not saying that's not true. I'm saying that we had a petition which was less than one percent of our permanent population, let alone the late residential.
I never seen a petition, so obviously it didn't get around everybody.
God, is it possible to meet a toll marker?
Yep, you're on.
I can hear you.
Hi, it's Linda Drilling. I'm on the planning and zoning committee. I was interested in your comment about manufacturing homes. One of the things I've noted, because I spend a lot of time when I go to fairs and things, looking at manufactured homes. They have to, for marketing purposes, make their homes as attractive as possible from the outside to get people to come in and see what's inside. So oftentimes, they have everything that we have on our list. I mean, they have at least four things of everything that we have on the list. So I don't think bringing up manufacturing homes is going to be that big of a deal. Plus the fact that we don't have that many in Lakeview. But we're talking about manufacturing, marketing and standards. The other thing that bothers me is that you said thirty percent of the hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes wouldn't meet our design standards. And I think what I've heard, if I'm hearing correctly, because it is hard to hear what's going on tonight, and they wouldn't meet the design standards, and I'm hearing that maybe you don't even have the current ones. This continues to be a problem with our public. Somebody out there is putting out false criteria that we have never approved in a planning and zoning commission. We put forth one set of planning and zoning criteria and that has been given to the council to consider and to vote on. And if you don't have those, then maybe you need to read those before you continue on with your argument. And, you know, that's all I can say is that this is an old argument that's going on since August. It has so much input, it's unbelievable. And yet, we're still going over the same old rhetoric. And, you know, we're not trying to force something down people's throat. We're trying to develop a very attractive city with minimal impact from any of our builders and people that want to live here. I'm done.
Scott, this is.
I just want to say one thing.
I could just say that we could have Dave Janet look into the legality that was brought up. And the only other aside I would make was when I went by the old log cabin. It has four of the criteria on it. So I would think that if a hundred odd years ago, someone could build that log cabin and have at least four of my criteria on it, it is not overly a hardship if the pioneers could do it. I'm done.
And I believe we have an ordinance about manufactured homes. I don't have it with me, but I'm sure we do.
Scott?
Hey, Rich, you're in.
Professor's here. Yeah, can I have a minute?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to voice my opposition to this ordinance also again. Based on, I really think I gotta back up to the point where Howard, the senior committee even then in existence, you know, John told me yourself, you know, they're all volunteers and they're all, there are no qualifications to be on this committee. And yet they have to make recommendations.
They do, they do go to, they do go to training, Rich.
The rest of us have to live with and that seems, that just doesn't seem like the right approach at all.
Rich, they probably got the same qualifications you would have if you ran for school board. You volunteered. What do you think?
Well, I don't know if anybody, it's kind of back to the point, John, that who's ever gonna tell me how to build my house probably should have lived in my house. And that's really kind of how that should be.
You know, Rich, it really isn't telling you how to build your house.
We're not telling you.
I'd like to address some of your statements, you know, we're not all volunteers or retired. We're not retired. A lot of us have jobs and you can write a law meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. But some of the people that have done council meetings the last few hours have young families to raise, both, husband and wife are working. You need to keep that in mind, that some of us work a lot and to make a meeting is a big deal. This Zoom thing is kind of a joke. I have no use for it, but if this is how we gotta do it, we gotta do it. As far as five oh eight is concerned, you know, throw it out. No motion, no second, throw it out.
I just don't think that we're telling someone how to build their house. We're not telling them what kind of porch to put on or even to put a porch on. We're not telling them what kind of garage to put on. We're not telling them what color. We're not telling them what siding. We're not, I think this has been blown out of proportion. And I'm not sure about how the meeting spits into it or being retired. I'm not sure what that's got to do with the design standards. I would tell you that P and Z members, I would guess most of them have gone to P and Z training that's offered by the state. I've gone to it. I know Tammy's gone to it. Yeah, I guess we're able to do that, but I guess if you want to serve, you try to do the best job you can. I guess I don't really understand where you're coming from with that, Rich. But I'm perfectly willing to have Dave Janet take a look at this.
Dave, are you up for that or should we just move on?
One second.
You did?
All right, Dave Janet?
Yeah, I can look into it. I thought that I had done that, I can't find it right now, but I thought I'd looked into it early on and it was my opinion, at least as I recall, sitting here right now, that design standards could properly be implemented by a zoning ordinance as long as you didn't totally eliminate the commercial or the value of property.
I recall that also.
Right, I.
When you get down to it, when you get down to it, speaking in the context of manufactured homes, really the only requirements, I just looked at the ordinance while I was sitting here. If you're going to have a manufactured home outside of a manufactured home community in Lakeview, Iowa, it has to be converted to real property by being placed on a proper foundation. And otherwise, the residents can meet. And it also has to meet all the other zoning requirements in the community. So, yes, there's a federal uniform standard as to the specifications for manufactured home, for fire safety and that type of thing. But our ordinance, like so many ordinances, just requires that a manufactured home be situated on a foundation and a minimum let's twenty feet. And that's to avoid discriminating against the placement of a manufactured home that otherwise meets the zoning requirements. But this concept that you can't require someone to have a foundation because it's expensive, you don't already take that. So that's what I'm thinking about as I sit here.
Okay, we're done with public input. Let's move on.
Mary has her hand raised.
Well, Mary, go ahead. I guess you had your hand up, Mary?
One second.
Hang on.
Mary?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you for taking a minute. I did have my hand raised during that last participant's comments. And I'm here to share that I would support and I do support the design standards. You know, one piece that we haven't talked about, but we have visited about in the past, so I won't dwell on this too long, is that having homes that have minimal square footage but have a maximum garage space for storage does not hold the value as the same as a new stick-built home that is focused on living space versus storage space. So the majority of people across the US, one of their biggest assets is their real estate property, primarily their home. And for the greater good of our entire community, limiting what the look of a home that's primarily made of storage versus living space impacts the value of the neighbors. So when people choose to build a house within an existing neighborhood, not out in the country and within the city limits, you know, we need to have a voice for the folks that aren't here, maybe not able to or want to participate because of various reasons, to protect their existing value of their home. I would support the design standards, but I don't think they're exceptionally difficult or out of line. We have eighteen, was it eighteen new permits, Scott, for this year? And I would say they meet those standards.
I'm not sure on the permit number, Mary.
Okay, five oh eight is a second reading. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Roll call.
So, this is second.
Second reading.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mole?
Reese?
I'd like to see, I think we got too many people disagreeing with this for me, though. Yes, slide does anyone know?
Wolman?
No.
Thank you.
Yes.
Second reading is passed. Okay, ordinance 509, building permits. Do you have any updates on that?
Now, there is no, no proposed changes on that. The, the ordinance is, proposed ordinance is on, on page seventeen. What, what this does is, is changes the supporting documents that, that would be needed to obtain a building permit for residential purposes. Okay, so if we're on page seventeen, in the middle of the page, it's item five, where it required plans. The underlined stuff would be new. Applications for new construction of principal buildings, that would be the principal use on the property, whether that's a home or, or say, a commercial use. The application for the construction of that principal building shall include elevation drawings and/or blueprints. So, elevation drawings being, being the sketches of, of what the exterior would look like on, usually on all sides. Or, it says, and/or blueprints, that we do allow blueprints. The other addition there would be item seven about the residential design standards, where they would complete this checklist and, that was on the previous page, that, that would be in addition to the, to the building permit packet, and the applicant would turn this in with their permit, saying which, which ones of the design standards they would need.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 509.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
This is the second reading of this ordinance then, too. Mole?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Wolman?
No.
Reese?
No.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we have a replacement on the Board of Adjustment, Mark Thorson. We have a motion to approve his appointments.
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
All right, Dave, that's second. Moore?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
A new park board member would like to be a volunteer, Kaylee first, then motion to approve her. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Wolman? Thank you.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Moore? Yes.
Okay, 2031 is a residential project. Amendment loan for...
So, yeah, this, here we are at the, kind of the end of, of a long process on these sponsored projects. So, the sponsored projects, the construction contracts are in place, and then this goes ahead and, and finances. Okay, so what this does is issues six point one six nine million dollars worth of sewer revenue, sewer revenue loan, that refinances the existing one that we have outstanding, and then accounts for the million-dollar worth of forgiveness that we've gotten, and then issues four hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars worth of sponsored project funding. So, that's all of the sponsored project funding that we were entitled. So, this is the process to actually do it. This would actually issue the debt, and the, the debt process works just the same as, as it did for our SRF loan in general. It's a, it's a drawdown process where the contractor's working on the project, submits their bills, and then we submit the bills to the state for a drawdown, apparently. So, it's, we don't receive a lump sum of money. But the state has, has approved all of our projects and approved the loan amendment application. What I wanted to approve with you is some numbers that are on page thirty-three and thirty-four. So, this is, this is kind of the, the end of the story on the findings of it then. Because on page thirty-three is, is the, the loan repayment schedule after the million dollars forgiveness, and then after issuing the four hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars sponsored project fund. So, total is six point one six nine million on that. Looking at a couple of highlights at the top, the annual interest rate, one point one seven percent. And I highlighted that to the right there, those are the draws about when we would anticipate to draw down the sponsored project money. But the thing to really note is the highlights in the middle of the page, where it's showing the annual debt service, where the annual debt service here is consistently in the two hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. Okay, look to the next page, where this was the initial amount that we had at six point seven million dollars before the million dollars forgiveness, and then also before the issuance of that sponsored project money. The interest rate is one point seven five percent. So, the interest rate is higher, but the other big thing then to note is, again, in the middle of the page, the, the annual debt service requirements, consistently three oh three, three oh four, and consistently up to three hundred eleven thousand, comparing that against the two hundred sixty-one thousand, which it will be now. So, you're much better about the capacity for repayment.
Everybody okay with the information? Motion on 2031. Can you also move, Rich? Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mole?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Reese? Little update, we had a, a pre-construction meeting on the Bobby Terrell Bio Retention Cell project. King and King is the contractor on that, and they are slotted to begin in June. That was the, didn't say any specific time in June, just thought it would be June, so June, but the completion date on the project is August third. That's the contract completion date.
And that's still in?
That's in, yeah.
Okay, we've got some bids on the sidewalk?
Yeah. You see the seven bids that we received, seven bids on, on this one for, that's on page thirty-five, you see the bids. But the low bid on that is from Allen Construction from Sac City. And the, the bid on that, thirty thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars, recommended to more than that.
More for two for the bill? Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mole?
Yes.
Reese? Wolman for us. Thomas?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
See, on that, there's a terrific bid, you know, the price is great. The project is funded with a twenty thousand dollar grant from, from Sac County Adama County. Okay, that can only fund up to half of the project. So, we will be looking, probably add some additions to this, where we, if we can do some additional sidewalks that, that... The total footage is going to be more than what we did. I think they've, they've measured without it to be more. But another thing that I'd like you all to take a look at is that there, the city sure could replace our own sidewalk. Well, it's past where the new parking lot's gonna be over there at the, by the owner. That sidewalk is in terrible condition, and we're, you know, we're going to take a look at that. Got that, chance to add that to this project.
What side of the street is that on?
South side.
That's a very much...
Hard to smell.
And that's from the old street or...
Our, you know, our property, the city property, is only the east half of, of that, the kind of east half of the area behind the...
I think it's really been a little more than half. So, will you replace it all the way through the corner to just our, just ours?
Jacobson owns the other part, and we could work with them to see if they would have any desire to, to join a project.
It would have to be heavier than...
Let's see where we're going. Okay, we're down to 2032. We're going to talk about the Assistant Utility Superintendent position. Establish a salary.
All right. Yeah, just, so you see the, the job description begins on page thirty-six, this same job description that's been reused before. With, there's only one addition on to that, that the Assistant Utility Superintendent participates in regular rotation for on-call. So, we add that. Other than that, it's the same job description as, as been done before. There's a resolution on page forty. That resolution does a few things. Creates, creates this position, approves the job description, acknowledges that the position classified as exempt on the Fair Labor Standards Act. Okay, and then it would authorize that the position would be posted for applications from internal candidates. And then establish a salary. Any, they see salaries, but...
I begin this a lot of thought, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to a position, but I just don't know that right now is the right time to spend something like this. Yeah, we have money in the bank, but with this COVID thing, I just want to be very careful about spending money on things that aren't necessary. So, I think I would be, just because of the timing aspect, I guess, creating this position because it's a plus. Those things tax there for my money.
I think the key to this is right in front of the bill. That's, that's what we're trying to help you with.
And I understand.
Yeah. I think it boils down to what the salary that the council is going to put in that market.
I think we do need a position. I think it's been, you know, there's, we used to have two separate people doing what Bill does now, and I just feel like it's economically wise to give him a little bit of relief without going back to having two salary managers. So, I think it, I think having one boss has been absolutely great. Everything has worked so much better, and departments have come together, and Bill puts everything very tight, and I don't think he should be on call twenty-four-seven. So, I'm in favor of this position. Salary I was thinking is maybe sixty-seven. What anybody else is thinking?
What are you wearing this on a very difficult, once and for all, black and silver one?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, and one of the things about that, when I was talking to Bill and getting calls all the time, I don't, nobody cares, but it's a tough situation to be on-call twenty-four-seventh, and you get called during the middle of the night and stuff like that. And after a while, it wears out, you know. But I was, when I was manager of transportation, that's when I did all the calls during the night, during the day, whatever might be the case. And after a while, this does come on, you know, so... Bill, you've been doing this a while now, two and a half, three years?
Been close to three.
And like I said, it's, it's a situation. I understand Dave's part, you know, like I said, it's not a budgeted thing, and it's not a, how do I want to say? Thing that perhaps keeps everybody from going, that's what's allowed. I mean, because it, it, it does wear on you after a certain time. The thing about this is that with, as a, a point in this position, what this will create is if Bill's gone, they know who's, who's in charge. The word continues, we've got a great bunch of guys, and that's why I want to promote within. I think it's important to have a plan that keeps carrying on to the next time down the road, you know what I'm saying? And I'm, I'm just saying that Bill leaves, you know, by no means we, we say this guy that takes this position automatically goes into that. It's all about being draft performance and how you handle the different things that come up, you know. It's, it's pretty easy with this, no emergencies, but as you know, we get emergencies, seems like quite often around here. That's what happens. We've got more people involved, we're getting to be a larger community, we offer a lot of stuff to, to get things done. And, and so I think, I think it's a, a good thing, and I understand it's a way to keep the organized, everything organized. And that's kind of what I'm...
I just want to reiterate that I'm not against...
No, I understand that, no.
It's just the timing of the financial piece of it.
Yeah, I, no, I, I realize that, and like I said, it's, you know, budget, and you've got another year, you know. I mean, you know what I'm saying, be after, that would come up what?
It would certainly, very likely be appointed after the first of July.
Yeah, so that would be...
It'd be a new budget year, and we didn't anticipate additional salary.
Um, a couple of things, if we're promoting within, you know, it isn't that we're, we're adding that whole salary in to our expenses. It's just the difference from whatever employee was at that time to what it will be now, at whatever we decide, if that makes sense. Another thing I think is important is when you only have one person in charge and that person is gone, then sometimes you need a second person that's in charge rather than just seniority taken over, kind of it. It puts that employee in a bad spot, I think. So, I think if you have an assistant position, I think that's better than relying on somebody with seniority that maybe the rest of the staff doesn't see as being in charge, so if that makes sense.
What you're doing is you're cleaning up the gray area.
Yeah, right.
You know, and that, sometimes the gray area leads to worse things, or, you know what I'm saying? So, that's why the chain continues, so...
Well, I think if we can stick to what Vicky said, the sixty-seven hundred, I think it wouldn't be so bad as, you know, Moore. You know, I don't, I think we'd have to stick in, to that area right there, myself.
You'd say about sixty-seven thousand, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Come here, we're going to have this everything.
Well, I agree with it, we need a, I guess, like a succession plan earlier on, and I also, I know, not personally, because I know Whitey, you know, took a lot of phone calls, and I'm on the end of the family part, where my husband always did that, and now my son is doing that, and it can really, over time, it wears on them and also wears on the family. So, I think there should be another position made. I agree with the sixty-seven thousand, and like Vicky said, it's not so much the whole sixty-seven thousand, it's just the difference in between that we're talking about.
So, Vicky, you have a motion on 2032, adding sixty-seven thousand, blank line?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Thomas?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
No.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bill, hopefully that lightens your vote, whatever we come up with down here.
The process then, as far as, we'll put a, put a notice out there about people applying or bidding for the job, and opening that, and...
Okay, you can come on in.
Yeah, I, I still do see this probably about the first of, of July before eighteenth, going to...
Yeah, we'll make sure it's right.
Kayla's going to help us on our enhanced online utility billing services that would make her life better, easier. You don't know?
Well, I mean...
I think she'll be through.
She'll be waiting. Good one, Dave.
You got the power, Kayla.
Call me, Ruth.
Yep.
If you, if you come up to the podium, the people online can hear you a little better.
They, they want to hear you, if you have something to...
Well...
What will this do?
It started out, you want to tell them Mr. Pearson has...
No, no, I want to hear your version.
No, you don't want to hear it. It started out by, by Scott making me watch a webinar that he had signed up for. Then this particular webinar, although interesting, what the folks ended up proposing wasn't... Then this particular webinar, although interesting, um, what the folks ended up proposing wasn't something that, that we were ever considering. And they never mentioned when they, um, talked with him that, that this was going to be part of their proposal. Their proposal was ways to help us, um, enhance our online presence for like credit card payments and our online bills. But then, of course, they wanted to, to do much more than that. They basically wanted us to outsource the billing and do everything. And, um, you know, we didn't feel the need for that, but what they did have for proposals was rather interesting as far as what you could see if you went online to pay your bill by credit card. And one of the reasons we started looking into it is because we've had requests from folks who wanted to set up an auto pay to their credit card, which right now we don't offer. We can do, you know, the auto pay through a checking, but they wanted to schedule their credit card payment when they wanted to be able to do it and just have it set there every month. So we got to talking and I knew that our current software company could offer a, um, better utility billing credit card program than what we bought. You know, we purchased the bare minimum to where they put in their account number, they could see how much they owe. They could pay that or make a payment on it. And, you know, that was it. So there's two things in here. One is we can upgrade to their new credit card online bill system. And it would give a full year's worth of bills that the customers could see, plus two years' worth of consumption that they could see. And they would create their own, go in and create their own account, and then all of this information would be available to them. So say end of the year and you have to do your taxes and, you know, for, for those folks who can deduct, say, electric for a home office or something like that, all of that stuff is right there for them. Along with how come my bill is so much higher this year or this month than last month, all of that stuff is visible to them too. So we're looking at that and then we're thinking, well, okay, um, how else do we get people to get online and say, sign up for auto pay? Or get e-bills even? Um, so that was another part of it. We could put right on there, which we've already put on our website, to where right on our website, when you go to pay, to pay by credit card, there's now a thing on there that says, sign up for e-bills. And we can also put something on our actual bill, which would be full page online, um, to say, to sign up for e-bills or, you know, whatever we want, basically. And then, um, our credit card company now offers a program to where they will upgrade us for free so that customers can schedule their credit card payments automatically every month and not have to go in each time and put in what they want. They can, they can schedule when they want it and just have it set each month.
So what's that cost to the city then?
So the difference is nine hundred dollars, um, and that's basically the, the maintenance cost. The program cost is, is fifteen hundred and then it's twelve hundred dollars a, a year for maintenance and upgrades or, or updates. Because we pay on all of the programs that we have, the payroll one we've got, the general ledger, the utility billing, the accounts payable, accounts receivable, all of those have a, a yearly maintenance fee on them. And so the maintenance fee would be twelve hundred and right now we pay three hundred. So there will be a nine hundred dollar difference in, um, maintenance fees each year. What we'd like, you know, hope is that more people would sign up for e-bills, more people would do the automatic payments or even automatic credit card payments, which of course is going to save the city money in sending out the bills, postage, you know, my time and uploading the file, because this, um, particular program will upload the file automatically every night. So if you pay by credit card and you go in there right away, it'll say pending, upload every night and say paid. Where right now, um, I have to upload the file. I could upload it every day. I generally don't, but it'll do it automatically. It's just not to do it overnight. And so we won't have any of that processing anymore to upload the file or download the file and process credit cards.
So how many people would do a decision that would sign up for this?
Well, you know, right now we process about thirty credit card payments a month, give or take. You know, we're hoping that by having this online and having that much more information and also having another thing in front of people to, to remind them to do e-bills and to remind them to sign up for auto pay, that, that it would, you know, increase our, um, credit card and e-pay or e-bill. We just didn't discuss, you know, what percentage we think we could get, um, as an increase.
So that thirty you're talking about, is that the same amount you have for e-bills or is there a difference?
No, there's, there's like sixty e-bills, but only, only thirty people do credit card payments.
E-bills, is that the automatic withdrawal from your bank account?
No, that would be the ACH.
Oh, okay.
So we have several hundred ACHs. It's just that a lot of folks don't like the fact that we only take the ACH on the twentieth. You know, once, once a month. They want to schedule the ACH when it fits with their, when they get paid. And we can't do that. And, and even if we, um, there's no other system option available for the ACH. It comes out on the twentieth when the bill is due. But not everybody can do that.
So how many, how many do you have, what's the numbers that you got that do that, that people have it automatically?
We have several hundred, but it's probably two fifty, three hundred that do the ACH. But, you know, we set up thirteen hundred bills each month. Um, we've got sixty signing up for e-bills, so we're hoping that.
That should, hopefully that will increase.
Hopefully that will increase. Yeah. We did have to.
You know, people that don't even have a computer or?
They still get the regular bill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we're not saying we take away from the credit cards or the, the card bills. We're just saying that, um, for a lot of the young people.
Yeah.
And a lot of the, um, folks whom don't live here full-time, that, and with the way the mail is sometimes and those little postcards get lost.
Yeah, what's the charge on, say, people don't have money in the bank at that time and it's an automatic, uh?
Well, that's why a lot of those folks don't sign up for the ACH. Because, you know, the twentieth, they pay when they get paid.
Right.
Where if they go online and pay either by credit card or e-check and schedule it, they can schedule it based on when they get paid. If they get paid the fifteenth or the first versus the ACH where it's always on the twentieth.
Well, I just wonder, so what, I'm sure you've had some that didn't go through and there's a charge on that.
Not for us.
Oh.
Not, not for the city. There is no, no charge.
No, I mean, do you charge the people for?
Do the, like a, NSF charge for the, a bad check charge to the customer?
Yeah.
Generally not.
No, no. And the bank.
Although, you know, we kind of have the ultimate heavy hand on that though, Terry, because we just, you know, we post them for disconnect right away if they, if they get a bad check back on them.
Right. And we, we, um, they have to bring in cash to cover that or to cover a bad ACH. And we, we have had a handful of bad ACHs.
Yeah.
But not a lot. Yeah, not a lot.
It's just a better way or another way for people to pay it that there can be.
It is.
I think this is the wave of the future. And I don't know how we can, you know, not do this. And I think you'll, might save in postage. So there's no increase in the monthly charge? It's just the annual charge? Did I understand that right?
That's for you guys.
Yeah, there is no monthly charge. Yeah, this is the annual charge.
I think, I think your postage will probably save you. Because I'm sure there's a lot of people that want to do it.
And I would think that there'd be, just get those e-bills.
Yes.
I like, I like the e, e-bills.
Yeah. Well, you, you saw in the packet the, what the new bills would look like, only they'd be full page and all the additional information.
And you, yeah. So if, if they're on, they're going to use this system or they're going to use the, what do you call the one under the bank, the H what?
ACH, yeah.
ACH.
Yep.
It's going to look the same when they get their e-bill?
Yeah, well, no.
Will they get an email or they won't? It just?
They won't. Uh, unless they sign up for e-bills, you know, that's the only time they're going to get the email, which we're hoping to increase the e-bill subscription and, and do more of that. Um, anybody, regardless of how you pay, can go online to the new system, create that account and have their information there. So if you didn't get your postcard in the mail because it got ripped up or it got stuck in a magazine and you threw the magazine away, anybody can go online and see what, what their bill was this month, what their bill was last month, how much they used.
Sounds like this is going to make it a lot easier for other people.
For sure. It's a lot more information that, there's a lot more opportunity to play.
Bill, Kay, did you say there's no charge to the customer for using a credit card on this deal?
No, it's, none of that has changed. We're going through the same credit card company, so there's still the four dollars or the dollar fifty.
Okay, so you're still paying in that charge.
Right, they're still paying that charge. Yeah, we can't, the only way we can get rid of that is, um, one recommendation was to add it into our rates. But I can't see that, that folks that don't use credit card appreciate paying for something that does. And, you know, if you're going to be late and not make your payment, the credit card fee is less than the penalty anyway.
Sounds like a good deal. Dave still has a motion to approve this. Will you second?
I'll second it.
Vote go.
Volkan, please.
He's one step ahead of everybody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah, I probably won't use it, but it's okay.
A lot of folks will. It, it just keeps us trucking along on the technical.
Thank you, Kay, for all your work today.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate having you explain it to me, though.
Yeah, once we get it set up, we'll show you.
I'd say you, oh, yeah, we got to discuss.
See, I don't know where about the part.
Is that a straight-up report?
I do want, just want to go through this, uh, stuff regarding, uh, COVID-nineteen update. A few things on this, it's on page forty-three. Restaurant occupancy has opened up. There's a couple of restaurants in town who are, who are open. Uh, a couple that are choosing not to open yet. So Kathy's and, and Ockham are choosing not to open. But the, uh, but Carp and the bar, um, are open for, for dining-in customers.
But they can't have drinks in there, right?
Pardon me?
They can't have drinks in there?
As, as part of, yeah, is part of the meal.
They can?
Yeah.
Oh. We stopped at, uh, Mike's place up at Storm Lake today and no drink and only carry-on drinks. So I don't know. I just, I don't drink, because I mean, I just saw this. They what?
We're not supposed to congregate in a bar, is that?
Well, no, they don't even have a bar.
At the bar? Oh, really?
I think you can't go in and just drink.
We have to order one chicken strip. Okay?
I have no idea. I didn't ask about it because I don't drink, so I don't really care.
Um, see, retail's open, uh, fifty percent of customer occupancy. Farmer's market, farmers markets are permissible. You want to talk a little bit about that, Terry? Any, any thoughts on like?
Well, yeah, with the campground open, we're going to go on time. Otherwise, we're not going to go with that campground. We'd lose money, you know, automatically.
But you can only have food vendors? Is that a problem?
Food is not permitted, um, but the government, what the government, what she said now, the food is, the only thing they could have is vegetables.
That's it?
They cannot have any packaged food on the coast.
Does that change recently?
And Hostelry now is not opening there, Mark, Farmer's Market till, uh, July seventh.
So you can't have your baked goods or any of that stuff?
Nope. Yeah, that's a.
That is, you know.
It's like having Walmart open, but not being able to open up campground.
Yeah. Well, that's kind of like, exactly. You know, the campground has to open before this thing's going to get straightened out anyway. You know, but I, like I told them when I come in here tonight, they, we're not doing social distancing at the campground. The other night, on that road, campers, I was sitting on the east side over there, on the east side, they, I bet there was twenty-five cars there. You know, I just, and I noticed that, right, we went around with a golf cart like we a lot of times do, you know, or a pickup, I don't know what. But anyway, we happened to notice that, that was, we're not doing social distancing at the campground, you know? And the next morning they was gone, but, so I mean, that was a bit of a party.
I guess, yeah.
So, well, I mean, do what you want to do, but I just, you know, something needs to be said about that, that they can't do that.
Well, the other thing was, you know, I get, when they, people ask why they're down there and I say, well, they're permanent or extended temporary. And their question is, so do they come up here on weekends and go home during the week? I don't know. I don't know.
Scott?
Boy, nothing at all.
Um, so this is off the state's website. And it says, encourage vendors who prepare foods at home, such as baked goods, to follow food safety practices during preparations and to securely wrap or package foods prior to bringing them to the market. So what you can't do is offer food samples or serve food that is intended for immediate or onsite consumption. So according to this, you can bring your baked goods, they just have to be wrapped before you, yeah, packages of whatever before you bring them down.
You have to have them in clear containers.
It just says, yeah, just says.
So they can see everything that's inside of that container.
Securely wrapped or packaged food.
Yeah, you can have samples or. Well, that's just what, you know, weird. Maybe it changed, you know, it's changing. It's changing every day.
But in other words, like the vendors that sold signs and stuff down there, they can't come.
They can't be there.
That's what I thought.
Because anything that's, well, they'd consider food and vegetables a necessity, otherwise it's not a necessity. And that's going to make people unhappy too.
Sure.
There's going to be a lot of unhappy people on the front.
Like, you see libraries, libraries may reopen and our library, uh, the library board has a meeting on May twelfth. They had decided that up until their meeting, they're, they're still not going to reopen. And it has more to do with the construction project than anything, that they're, they're working on relocating a bunch of books and stuff on, on the inside. So, um, they would have a, an answer for us on the twelfth about when they look at that. Uh, you know, you get questions about, uh, salons and barbers and this type of stuff. That's still closed at least through, through the fifteenth. The governor's order just goes through the fifteenth for now. But also closed through the fifteenth is playgrounds, swimming pools. So, um, playgrounds still, uh, still closed. We still have our shelter houses closed as, as congregation, uh, congregating places. So the, uh, basketball courts closed.
So why can you have a bathroom open at the shelter in Towne Bay, but you can't have them open in Speaker Park? Because that's where people stop all the time.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I don't know that there's a prohibition against it, you know? It's just the notion that you can't have, uh, that the playgrounds are closed, you know, that it would, it would make some sense to not.
People that aren't using the playground, people that are, um, you know, people in cars and they assume they're whatever, salespeople, I don't know who they are. And that they stop there all the time. I just wondered why it can be open down at the other one and not up there.
It isn't open by the lake, is it?
It is, yeah. Just as Thursday or so.
Oh, okay. I was going to say it wasn't, um.
Just the other thing on that too is Eric's looking at replacing some of those faucets in there yet. And I don't think the faucets have come in yet.
I mean, you left automatic ones on the kitchen.
Actually going away from those. I mean, there's automatic ones in there now that keep them functioning, so.
They don't work at all. I mean, not the ones they have down there. I don't, I don't know about others.
All right. And then the campgrounds. Campgrounds are, are closed currently through May fifteenth for recreational campers. But of course, you see there's several campers down there. And they, that is anybody that has been a, described as a, a long-term or permanent tenant. So we have long-term campers down there.
Long-term recreational campers.
I mean, that's probably true. But we, we've looked at the long-term part that, uh, and was looking at if it's at least a couple of weeks or so, we'd consider that to be long-term.
I thought it's two days.
No, well, I, whatever.
I thought it was thirty days. It's not.
There is, there's no criteria.
The governor's office issued this and there's no criteria.
Yeah, it just says long, that, that's the wording is there.
So we don't know if we're in a van or not, because we might not be.
We're not in a van, yeah.
Well, I know, but there's a lot of civil proceedings.
So, um, you know, no discussion on this yet, but keep it in the back of your mind, what happens after the fifteenth of, of May? If there's, uh, there's no change to that, uh, recognize that memorial date is the following week. It's only one week after that.
I haven't listened to her for a while. I anticipate. The numbers are still going up.
The numbers are going up.
The numbers are going up, yeah.
I think a lot of this got probably opened.
I don't know. Do you have any good feeling for that? Kay is good about listening to it.
I was unable to listen today. There was too many interruptions.
I think there was like five hundred and something.
She's still waiting for with the.
Almost five hundred.
I just figured that, being the city, that we should know if anything new was happening. And so I try and listen. And so I try and listen. You know, every day, just to, but usually the phone or somebody comes in and I, I don't catch it all.
So I do wanna, a little discussion about access to City Hall. Um, as of right now, access to City Hall remains limited. So the, the south door is open. That's the only doors to, to City Hall that that's open. Citizens are encouraged to use the drop box for payment. You know, we certainly legally could, could open the, the place up and, and we could have full access again. But yet in, in some ways, if not having people come in to, to pay their bills especially, it's just that, that many fewer people in and out, um, that mean fewer chances for interaction. So it, our setup has been pretty good. The one door's open. We put a sign outside, a big sign that says use the drop box and people have been pretty good about that. And uh.
There are a few who don't think of paying for them, but.
Well, sure. Well, I don't know, the one lady brings her cookies every time.
Well, yeah, I can't complain. She brought me cupcakes today.
Are you still planning?
The dentist?
Yeah.
Still? Still planning, you know, we'll.
One of them did jokes is not there. They go up against that building. Oh, that's not it.
It's coming out.
The sidewalk?
Between the two buildings, it's coming out.
Oh.
He built it up four feet and then he got locked down there. Get in there and keep that smell. And we're gonna take the floor off.
So, well, give me a little more update on that, the bowl.
I don't have any, anything new from, from a day or two.
What was a day or two, though? What was the plan?
Just still the, the, the plan, just the concept again where, where we would swap the, swap the properties, he'd, he'd build his new building. I don't have any more precise update from that.
But we're not gonna give you.
Do it since the door down.
We're not gonna give you like a.
That's, you know, that, that still is his proposal. He'd like to have that five feet. I don't think.
We need to see an agreement. And I don't know, I mean, we can't wait. How long can we wait? How long should we wait?
You know, I, I would ask for a little bit of patience on this about getting the, getting the lot cleared to get that clean bill of health on that lot for the environmental clearance before we do the transfer. So that's, that is the, the kind of limitation right now.
Well, okay, so we can't have an agreement with Ken about anything?
They didn't, yeah. They, they, they didn't want. Nothing's predetermined before that time, you know, you gotta give them this environmental clearance. We gotta get environmental clearance on, on the, on the lot before we would enter into any formal agreement.
That's because.
Because of that.
How long?
Well, I, I'll have to talk. I see him being quick, you know. I don't, I don't have an answer exactly what that is, but.
So I have a doubt maybe more than he can have a face. And why wouldn't they put the public policy?
He was afraid we'd open up the town.
Yeah, it, that's more about the stability of the neighborhood property. My last, just my last couple comments on, on COVID nineteen deals with, with mass gatherings that are still limited to ten people. Uh, of course, we, we canceled the tip and sample first concert are canceled and there is a water formal meeting on Wednesday night. I guess really my hope that they would not make a, a decision right away on Wednesday. Give that, give that a couple more weeks and find out what the next the next pronouncement from, from the governor is gonna be. But you know, we'll be, we'll be thinking about whether we're gonna do that or if there's some big limitations about how water.
There's so much unknown out there. It changes every day.
All right, my uh my other really not too good news for you today is the, is the stuff about the lagoon that the uh, that the contractor had had dug up and, and raised the, the low spots of, of that pipe right and then backfilled the thing again. And it settled out, still has some problems. There is a seventy to eighty foot section of the pipe that still has a dip in it. And they think this section was initially okay and then when they raised the pipe, it pushed this other area down. The boring contractor will be back here tomorrow. They'll, they'll be back to dig that thing up tomorrow in hopes that it's just a one-day fix out there. So they dig it up, raise the pipe, tell the wise to uh make sure that it is online. Then go ahead and backfill, but then they gotta wait a few days again to uh assure that there's no additional uh sinkage and slough on the pipe and then, and then they tell the wise to pipe.
So does the engineer have any comment about it?
Again, I got this like, what do you have to flash to them?
So he knows it right now once he doesn't know it's down there?
I would hope he knows if I just have.
So, so the original was a hundred and what? How many people was it, a hundred and five?
Hundred twenty-three or something.
Yeah.
Hundred twenty-three. So they, they didn't get half of it, right?
You have seventy to eighty feet now, no? Not much. Did, did you get that Larry about uh the contractor? I'm trying to unmute you here. We right at that same spot, yeah. Sounds, sounds like the deep, the deepest part again. And it sounds like tomorrow.
What time?
With, in the morning, right, right quick.
Well, it's raining.
Oh, that sounds, that's good, so.
It's supposed to rain all day tomorrow.
No, okay.
I don't know. So they're gonna move it more, group it with the excavator and all that?
Yep, yep. Figure that they're gonna dig it up again. Ben, I, I gave you a copy of, of this, this draft of a letter to from Feenster and Kim to Grunman X and it deals with liberated damages and you can just consider that FYI because it also the, it gets pushed back again because of, of this pipe thing. This pipe thing's gonna take at least another week. And Dave Genin, hold, hold on one second for me, please.